Thank you.
I don't see it. There we go. Okay, why don't we start the meeting at seven o'clock? First item that we got is old business is the Elm Street variance that we voted on. We don't have that decision, do we?
Not yet.
So we were hoping to get that decision at least by email. It was mailed Monday to us. We haven't gotten it and we hope perhaps during the meeting.
Email copy. No, I requested it again today and left a voicemail. So I'll keep checking it before we adjourn.
Do you know what the extension is? And then when we have the extension date on that?
If we get it, we'll have to come in and sign it, but we'll have to vote the replacement number for Zach. He's going for two weeks.
It'll have to be Greg for the new member. He wasn't here to hear it.
He wasn't here to hear it.
So it'll have to be Greg.
You heard all the hearings, right?
Yes, I was here. I just, I excuse myself because of the neighborhood.
Yeah. So I'm gonna make a motion to replace Zach Cameron with Greg Logan.
Somebody second that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed? Do you have an extension?
Yes, it's actually until July 21st.
Yeah, meeting is July 20th, next meeting?
Yep. So we'll be all right.
I'm gonna make a motion. Well, some can make a motion to continue this to July 20th, our next meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue this meeting. The case number is 0416 until July 20th.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The Stone Ridge, the case number 516 and 6-09. The Form F-1, we've had a new one written out by our attorney. We have not voted on this. So we need to take a vote on this first. Everybody seen? Let me read it to everybody.
Before we do that, you could replace Zach, or you can...
You have someone to...
All right, I'll replace him with me. Peter Karen, Greg Logan and Zach.
Okay, I'll make the motion to replace Zach Karen with Bob Adams.
Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? No opposed? Passed. Okay, so we've, we had some concern about the language the last time, so I had a conversation with Marguerite. This is what we came up with. Have you, have you seen this?
I have.
Okay. Let me just read it so everybody... Nobody, we don't all have a copy of this, right?
No.
We don't either. Okay. From the Office of the Zoning Board, undersigned being a majority of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Dyton, Mass. Hereby certified that the requirement for work on a ground called for, by an approval will covenant contact, contract dated November 6, 2014 and recorded in the Bristol District Registry of Deeds on November 10, 2014. Book number 21975 and page 272 and said lots are hereby released from the restriction as to the sale and building specified thereon. Lots designated on said plan as follows. Lot number 9 and 45 with a condition on lot 11 previously released from the covenant on September 16, 2015. As evidenced by Form F-1 Certificate of Performance recorded at the Bristol County's registry of deeds on September 18, 2015. That book 22533 on page 223 will be returned to said covenant and along with lot 48 which lot has not yet been released from the said covenant will remain as said covenant until further released by the subsequent vote of the Zoning Board of Appeals and new recording of a F, Form F-1 Certificate of Performance. Any discussion on that?
Didn't we sign this last month?
No.
We signed nothing that looked like this?
No.
No, I went back and looked at the meetings because I saw it here and said...
Oh, was that just the house style we signed?
We signed the house style of Bristol, yeah. We did not vote on this because we continue this because Marguerite has some concern about the language down there.
Right, okay.
Anybody have any questions about this?
This is, she recommends this.
This is what she recommended versus the one that we had at the last meeting. Someone want to make a motion to, one of the voting members make it?
I'll make the motion. We accept. As written.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I should've asked if there was any discussion, but that's fine. Yes, so it's gonna be...
Did we replace Zach?
Yes.
With Bob Adams?
So, you and Greg can sign it. They're gonna give it to Peter. So we're not, on case number 3-16, there's been conversation with Rob, but the decision has not been written yet. Their extension, we're asking, he signed an extension on June 14 yesterday, granting us an extension to July 22, 2016 from the decision. We should have the decision by then. Has Marguerite been in contact with Rob? I know Rob spoke to you, Roz, but we don't know. During the day she probably, she probably didn't.
I think they're having trouble getting together.
What's taken so long, do we know?
I don't honestly know.
Do we need to date this?
I mean, this has been going on since February. Or was it last year?
Well, no. Well, it was last year, then we changed it from a variance to a special permit. We've already voted on it. It's just a matter of the decision being written up. And he's agreed to have it extended to July 22. So I don't think we need to take a vote on that, but he's already signed extensions to July 22. And hopefully we'll...
He missed the other meeting, right?
He, we continue, he wasn't at the last meeting, but we continue.
It's just considering he was so desperate to get that in, so that he could get his, what are they calling?
Defiant.
No, the tubes in the ground.
Yeah.
But, okay.
I don't know what delay is, but there's no harm in thinking.
Yeah.
We've already approved this, no harm.
There's no harm in not telling. It's gonna happen with the decision.
So our next case is that 7-16, the pine's modification request.
Oh, you got one, sorry. There's no formal...
There's no...
Nope, it's just that on the front, he's got the site, the outside cover, the folder can't...
Yep. But is there something running specifically where he's looking for?
Do we need the permanent inspector on this?
He actually, he actually wants to come down on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
Oh.
Did you?
I didn't see, no, I didn't see it either. I tell the transport, these guys weren't aware of that.
You have a lot of talent. That's one of them that I didn't know.
I was busy.
Yeah, we're just so...
You get a turn. Just a couple more years. The onset's quick, especially for building inspectors.
That's what I'm told.
You wanna pick three voting members?
All right, Bob Adams. How about, let's continue, like, you know, that?
Sounds good.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Jason and Greg Logan.
Well, we tried not to keep you two on the same...
Okay, so well, it'll be you then. You speak up again, will you?
It will be the voting members now. And why don't we...
Jason Quinn, right?
Yes, Jason Quinn. Why don't we listen first and I'm not sure if we need to take a vote on whether this is substantial or not. I don't think it is substantial, but let's get an idea as to what you're looking for.
What we're looking for is the foundation, unfortunately, the bulkhead of the foundation protrudes one foot and four inches into the setback line. It's an inadvertent error on our part that we made sure that from now on, we actually pinned the hole itself, so it doesn't happen again. So the variance we're asking for is to be 8.7 feet rather than 10 feet away from the lot line, the setback.
Why don't we discuss then whether this is a substantial change or a, not a substantial change. I personally don't think it's a substantial change, but I think we do have to vote on it, so since I'm a voting member on this, I'll make a motion that this is not a substantial change.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have some things I wanna ask.
Sure.
Is lot 29 built?
Lot 29 is, it'll be right next to it. It's not built, no.
Can we make the setbacks so that they meet what we're requiring, the 20-foot buffer between 10 on this one and 10 on that one?
I see what you're saying, yeah. We can do that, yeah. So add, add like a one foot on the other side.
So that they're not that close.
Yes, yes, we can do that.
So, so it's not any foundation?
There's no foundation on lot 29.
So to still keep the 20 footer between the two, you give him 10, even though he only has 8.7 on the buffer, it still keeps the next lot, so he has 20.
Still maintain the same frontage.
Frontage is an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you're not gonna take it off.
Well, I think the difference here is the, and when I had talked to, I think Jim about this some time back, so that we don't have to move the lot line.
Right, right.
We would still grant this variance.
As long as it keeps sustainable.
But as long as the next house gets built 10 feet away from this point, or 20 feet away.
It'll be 20.
Right, because other than that, you're gonna go through changing the lot lines.
I know you discussed that. That's what I was trying to get at.
At 11, like 11.3.
Yeah.
The next must be 11.3.
Just so we keep that same.
We will do that.
All right. But we still have to hold on with this decision.
Yes, so get back to...
So somebody seconded it. Somebody's gotta...
They seconded it.
Well, somebody...
Well, I asked if there was any discussion.
Right.
Peter. So are we all done with the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed? So it's not a substantial change. Any questions regarding anything that he's, I know you've asked the question already, is there anything that...
Can we make sure that's into something?
We should have to.
Condition on lot 29 that we have to keep the 11-foot 3 condition back to make this, so it'll give us the 20-foot buffer zone on that. I don't know if the building's...
So the idea is, just so I understand, you don't want any, the building on lot 29 to be any closer than 20?
From there.
20 feet from that point.
From the bulkhead over there, yeah. So basically what we're looking for, we're gonna approve the change in the setbacks for lot 28, make it an 8.7 distance from the lot 29. And lot 29, the house has to be 20 feet away, built 20 feet away from the corner of lot 28, the house on lot 28. Basically, that's what it is. Jason, you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Peter, you have any questions?
No.
I don't have any question.
Jason, you understand what we did here?
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
Any further discussion?
I bet you'd have put it all in words.
I was gonna say, gentlemen, for me, for Marguerite, so I have lot, lot 29 home has to be at least 20 feet from the corner of...
Foundation.
Right. You're gonna, the variance is approved for lot 28.
Well, we haven't voted on it yet.
Well, okay, assuming.
So let me, let me make the motion that...
Well, let's start by the condition first, so that you make the motion with the condition.
Let me make the whole, the whole motion with the condition on it.
That's why I wanna tell you what the condition will be. Or do you know it?
Well, we're gonna, I think I mentioned it earlier.
Okay, good.
That we're going to approve the variance request for lot 28, that the house can be built 8.7 feet away from the lot 29. And that the house on lot 29 has to be 20 feet away from the house that's, that's been built on lot 28. Anybody wanna add anything to that?
Second, house on lot 29 is to be minimum 20 feet.
That's, that's the condition.
That's what I said.
That's the condition.
Yep.
Of the variance.
That can be verified if my foundation has built for lot 29.
For lot 29. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? So we need to have that decision written up by Marguerite, so we won't have that signed until next meeting.
Okay.
But you, you know, you've been approved.
Okay, thank you.
For the variance, and I anticipate a problem with that, and it'll have to be recorded once it's signed.
Sure.
As well as that Form 1, you're gonna have to record that also.
Yeah, when do you think I can get it notarized?
I can get that notarized in the morning, so if you are...
I'll stop by tomorrow. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
I can have Zach bring my kit.
Oh, if he's coming and picking you up, then...
Zach, tip, then, whatever.
But I still won't get a tip if you're in the morning.
Then you can do it upstairs.
Thank you.
Okay, the next under new business is a request by the Police Building Committee. And the first one is, we're asking for an extension. The first one is dated June 13, 2016. Zoning Board of Appeals, 979 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass. Is 02715.
You're gonna have to present.
Yep, to whom, well, yeah, we can pick all the members. It doesn't matter for this. To whom it may concern, we would like to request an extension for case number 1215 and case number 1615, the owner of the property located at Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass. Joseph Chico for the building, Police Building Committee. So they're requesting an extension and the case 16-15, we signed that on January 20, 2016. This would've been recorded by the clerk the following day, so they request a six months extension on this, on our decision, which would be July 21, 2016. Am I correct on that? And on the second one, 1215, maybe we should, uh, put the members first, the voting members first.
All right.
I think we had, I put the same voting members on that.
Oh, on the form? Okay, so Zach's not here, so Zach needs to be replaced. Who do we have?
Well, Peter Karen, Kemp, Chico, Greg Wood. You've been on, in on the other ones.
Yep. Okay. In, in reality, it's just whether you want to grant them an extension, doesn't matter what happens in the past. Well, I think that people understand it, people understand a little bit better. So on case number 1615, it would be to January, excuse me, it would be July 24, 2017. And on the other case, they provided us a letter also for that. It would be...
Six months or a year?
Six months.
Put those in the 23.
And it's right under the top page.
Okay, we signed it September 15th, was recorded the 16th, I believe, so that would go to March 17, 2017.
It should be right under this one.
This, this one right here?
Um...
No, this one.
That is going to, yep, March 17, correct.
Okay, any discussion on these extension? If anybody was at the town meeting the other night, who was mentioned, I believe, that they won't be starting the project until probably the fall of 2017, is that correct? So we know no action's gonna happen there, so we're granting these, we're gonna be granting these extensions for each of the cases that we discussed that we approved, that you voted. Are you here? I didn't see you.
If, if what was said to us is correct, and that's the second time I've heard it, that's gonna be a problem with the expiration of the March 17, date 2017. That variance will lapse prior to the issuance of the building covenant. So that's gonna create an issue.
Well, they can come back before us and have a petition us again. We'll see what the, how far along they are.
I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of the circumstances.
Yeah, it's probably, they're...
Probably gonna come back for the two variances over again, and you can review the site plan, 'cause things are gonna, parking and things like that are gonna change.
Okay.
Are they moving forward with the jump?
The problem is that we had a plan ready to go and the bids came in high.
He said that, didn't he?
We rejected all the bids. Now we're working with the architect and increasing the square footage.
Or decreasing square footage? Decreasing the square footage?
Up to 8,500 square foot instead of 6,000 or so.
So it's gonna be more?
Well, it's gonna be more, but it's gonna be for the future, not for five or 10 years, you know?
And are they talking about the second floor now?
There's two options. Option one is the second floor, and option two is the low level, one, one level.
And on site, no, once in the next meeting of the police...
We haven't, we've just got the, I just got the prints today of the copies of the options, so we should have a meeting within another couple of weeks.
You mean a low level instead of, I mean, one in the ground, like a basement and...
With the use group designation for police station, low grade, inhabitable areas or not.
No.
It was a walkout, went down to work on it now, but that's not the case.
The photography of land's not like this, you couldn't have it...
It is, but it's too close to the wetlands. Try to stay away from the wetlands.
Okay.
That's why the retaining wall is going up.
Build it up, yeah, yeah. All right, I got you.
Any further discussion about this?
What's the most we can do, Joe? Is it six months or a year?
The wet.
What's the most the ZPA can do?
You can give it six months, and we've had a, we lost a case because we extended two or three times.
Right, remember that. Well, that's why I was wondering what...
But that wasn't the litigation, though, right?
Yeah, but it says six months.
But I think the statute says.
What, six months?
Six months. And you can only give that, you can only give that one extension.
Yeah.
To the litigations.
That, that was my point, so if, if this all timeline all works out, we'll be back in front of this board.
Right.
That would be the last time we can do it.
Right.
Well, the way I understood it on that other case was because we extended, the man butted filed against it, there was litigation. If there was no litigation, you could extend it again, right?
The statute says one time, six months.
Only, only one time.
One time, six months.
So you gotta redo the whole process again?
What?
If it doesn't happen in six months?
Yeah, we have to go through...
We're gonna reapply for it.
Right, and it's gonna look different than everything else, so we need to look at that.
I made everybody aware. They're gonna have to go back to the boards anyway, 'cause the site plan was gonna change.
Yeah.
So...
They may not need the setbacks. We don't know.
Have they got clearance on the curb cut?
I'm sorry?
Have they got clearance on the curb cut?
I don't know. I've not seen the application.
They're not asking for an extension on that one, because they've actually requested not to go along, they withdraw it, basically.
There's two variances involved. One is the setback from the center of the road, and one is for a little triangle in the back.
And that may all change with the new design.
Okay, good.
So entertain a motion that we approve the extension on case number 1215.
You gotta put members on first.
Yeah, it's not me.
Yeah.
Oh, you replace that?
Yes.
Yeah, we replace it with Greg.
That we're gonna extend this six months, and the extension date will be to March 17, 2017. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? So Greg, if you're signing that one? And I'll make a motion on case number 16-15, that we extend, give an extension on that variance to July 21, 2017. Any discussion on that?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
On case number 1615, that we extend, give them an extension to July 21, 2017.
And that's on, that's what you have approved.
It's a triangle.
Triangle, yeah.
Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? No opposed? All right, just make sure I don't go home with any good stuff, okay?
It was a little bit, huh?
Yeah.
I'm glad it's over. Do we have a minute, Stuart?
Yeah.
Everybody was giving copies of the minutes by email. I think we sent it twice.
Yeah.
You wanna read the minutes? Take some time to read the minutes, or you...
No, I thought it was something here.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of May 18, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? I do wanna make a comment about the fees. We, as everybody knows, we've increased the fees, but apparently we can't touch that money. Right now, with the way it stands, we're having the petition, prior to this change in the fees, we had the petition of paying for the decisions, and we've agreed to increase the fees and that we would pay the decisions. However, that money goes, that fees goes into, I believe it's called a reserve fund, that we don't have access to. So we're taking it out of another fund that we have. Name of that fund?
Professional and technical.
Professional and technical. And I think at some point, that's going, this money here goes, that we collect, the fees goes into the general fund for the town, so I think probably in October, we're gonna have to ask for an increase in fees for the other fund that we have to take this money out of.
So we can't transfer it from...
We can't transfer, we can't touch that money, can't transfer it. We give it back to the town at the end of the fiscal year for the money.
So when we put a budget together and we increase the professional and technical fees, what did they do? Take it out?
Um, I don't actually know what they...
I don't know what the final, I'm not sure what the final, because we wrote on the budget.
Do you have that? Did you bring that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, can you see what's in there for professional and technical?
Under what? The zoning board?
Yeah.
There is nothing on that. It just says...
I don't think it was that specific. I think we just...
It just says expenses.
It just says expenses. It didn't show the line items in the budget. That was...
So, but what is that number?
Well, it's an expense account.
No, I know, but what is the amount that they budgeted?
I don't know.
For us, for the year?
Yeah.
$54,376.
Which is about, how much more is it from last year?
Over last year?
That's why I was wondering.
Well, part of it is, we're gonna get a pay increase. They're gonna figure out what they're gonna give. It's gonna go 2%, 2%, 2% for every year. So that's, that's gonna take some of the money out of that.
So it's gonna come out of professional, technical?
Right, so I think though, in the fall, especially...
I don't know if I wanna do it, but you didn't say anything about that.
See, when we put the budget together and...
You asked for 82 on the year.
Right, the whole point of that was, we were not paying Marguerite, or Gay and Gay to write the decisions as opposed of the applicant. But we raised those fees, so in other words, instead of saying, your fee, your application fee is 300, and then, then at the end, okay, now here's another bill for 600 to write the decision, it confused a lot of the people who were coming in. We just said, "Application fee is 700." And we kinda did all the paperwork on our end, knowing that the bill for Marguerite was gonna be XYZ. And the reason why we did that was because when a decision was declined, it was very difficult to go back to that applicant and say, "We know we declined you, but here's a $700 bill we want you to pay." And so after some discussion with Marguerite, we decided, you know what, why don't we just raise the fee and incorporate that fee? They write the check one time, they don't know how it's dispersed, it doesn't matter. That money goes into professional and technical account. Well, it goes into.
Goes to the general fund.
General fund.
Right.
I understand, it's all right. It was supposed to go into, it always did go into general fund, but that was the whole idea of increasing professional and technical, so that, instead of, that's how it came. If the count, if it goes into general fund, then raise our technicals, so that way when we pay Marguerite, it would come out of that, that fee. So now we're going to have a shortfall in that account. And at some point, we're going to have to go.
I have a question, Peter. On, when the planning board, their fees and everything is all cut in a separate fund for the, in the planning board. Other times, they've used the money to offset other tax or bills that they've borrowed against it.
That's called a revolving.
Revolving account.
We don't, okay.
You don't have a revolving account.
Should we establish one?
You have to establish it at town meeting.
At town meeting, okay.
Should we have that? Well, probably, but I talked to our town accountant, we can't take money out of that fund. It goes into the general fund. It builds up, and then it's turned over to.
Turned over as free cash and.
We could certainly do that.
Well, we have two choices, I guess. Is it, did she say, come October, we can request a replenishment?
We can.
Okay.
My discussion with her, we can. We can, so we'll have to figure out how much it's going to cost the rest of the year, how much we have in that fund. But do you remember if we increased that when we went before the finance committee? We had a budget. Do you know if we, remember? I don't have the figures in front of me.
I go to the finance, that's when I was, yeah, but when you sat, oh, on vacation.
Right, but.
When I sat with the selectmen.
Did you request an increase in that?
Right, and I explained it to them why we needed it, and to them, there was, it was never an issue. The only issue they've had when I gave them our budget was making the secretary full-time, I doubled some uniform fee. They said, that's, that's wrong, you can't double it, and they said, instead of being 500, it was 400. Other than that, they signed off on it. So I walked out of it thinking, there was no issue with anything.
But when I've been with the finance committee, they had several issues. They had requests for an increase in our salaries.
Right.
They had a problem with the digitalizing everything that we were going to.
I understand.
But he's actually paying it out of his budget, Jim's budget. And then he had a question, actually, they did not address your increase.
I understood the 5,000 that we put in, because when it was first explained to me, it was, we were going to pay 5,000 to tap in. Understand it was a mistake, it corrected it. The idea of, of the wages is, one of the things that concerns me is, you cannot compare town for town for town. In other words, I know.
But that's how they've done it in the past.
Yeah, but in a sense, it's not, it's not correct, because you've got a town of Swansea, for example, twice the size of Dayton, maxed out. Their zoning board of appeals meets once a month, they're not dealing with 40Bs, all their land is maxed out. It's not an issue for them. You go to Rehoboth, it's the same thing. But when you start to go to towns like, not what, Cumbell and Rhode Island, places where there's vast amounts of land, where they're dealing with 40B, well, Somerset, I mean Massachusetts anyway, where they're dealing with 40Bs, their zoning boards are working round the clock. So you can't just say, well, I'm going to compare it to Rehoboth, or I'm going to compare it to Berkeley. If you're going to do that as a finance committee, then come back with figures that say, this is why, as, as the finance committee, we are not granting your request, but, because you're not comparing apples to apples. You can't just arbitrarily say, this town is growing, yeah, but this town's growing at 10 times the rate that another town is growing. If, if they don't have 40Bs because they're done, and we have three 40Bs coming up, where do you expect that time and effort to come from? That's why I had.
Well, they gave the example of the finance committee, Rainham, they don't get paid, but they have 40Bs, so.
Right, but they're not growing, Rainham doesn't grow at the rate that we grow. Rainham is maxing out. But here's my, here's my question. Where is that information? Was it, it was shared with other members from the zoning, from the, from the finance committee. Was it a phone call? Was it just somebody's friend, who's a friend who says, I'm on the finance committee, we don't get paid? Yeah, zoning board. I want, I want to see where the actual work is that gets done, and not just.
You can bring it up at the next finance committee meeting next year when we have our budget, but right now, that's the way it's been resolved, and then people voted on. Funding is at that amount, that's just the way it is. So another thing I want to point out is that next week, they're reappointing members of this board, and I understand that Bob Adams and Greg Logan are coming up for reappointments.
And Greg Logan's?
Greg Logan, I believe, Greg Logan and Bob. Everybody wants to attend, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. I don't know when.
I think Zach is next year, I'm in 2018. I'm not sure what Peter.
I thought it was another year. I thought so too.
I thought we should talk about it.
No, it's, it's two every, two every year. So if anybody wants to attend the meeting, they can feel free to attend the meeting.
Next Wednesday night?
Next Wednesday night, yeah. They're on Sunday hours. Anything else we, anybody wanted to discuss? You got anything, Joe, you want to add? Bob, looking for Jim?
Yeah, just real quickly, we had one of the applicants for a ground mounted solar array questioned the requirement of a site plan, and questioned it several times with Rosalind Rossi, to the point where I had to get involved. And I made him aware that the site plan requirement is specified in our bylaws, and none of us have the authority to exempt him from that bylaw. So if he wishes to put a ground-mounted array in the town of Dayton, he needs to comply with the bylaw and produce the site plan. He was trying to get away from the engineering requirements and so forth. So that conversation took place today. I asked Ros to pull out. Previous cases that we heard, they have all submitted an engineered plan or a site plan, so we're going to stay consistent. We're going to follow the bylaw, we're going to request that an engineered plan be submitted, or we will leave the case.
We voted the other night at the town meeting on this new bylaw, on those portal things. In the way I understood it, I haven't gone back and read it all over it again, but it seemed to me that, that all permitting is, special permitting is going to now fall on the planning board, whether they're ground-mounted for.
Solar.
Requesting hearing, though.
Yeah, that doesn't negate the site plan requirement.
But we're not going to be hearing it.
That's only after the attorney general ratifies.
Okay, I'll bet you.
That usually takes until the fall.
So we have two coming in July.
Okay.
Right.
I just want to be clear.
On bylaw changes or implementation, it usually don't, doesn't come back till October from the attorney general's office.
But where are they located? These two that are coming in?
I didn't get the address.
One of them is Hot Street, right? Isn't it on Hot Street?
Wellington Street and Pleasant Street.
We've already approved the Hot Street one, right?
Right. Unless there's another one that I don't know about, but.
So there's only one coming in there, two? Yeah, but you just said the first one was Hot Street.
No, Wellington.
Wellington and Pleasant.
Wellington.
Yep, 1990 Wellington, and I think it's 2641 Pleasant.
Is it a conflict for anybody else? Anybody here?
What's the address on Pleasant Street? 1941?
I think it's 2641. But let me just confirm that.
Way far away. I might get on the roof of my house and look down on it.
About Wellington?
Well, I live up on Elm Street, look way down on the.
You know, what was Wellington's?
1990.
2651 Pleasant Street.
What are you good?
2185.
2185, 21?
26.
It's my understanding that you're coming back to like for us, Peter, as chairperson.
And you'll be vice chair?
Yeah.
There was a shot. I know I had to make one decision.
And it was a good decision, so I appreciate that. Since I was unavailable. Anything else we need to discuss?
No, I make a motion, we're here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Ayes have.
Ayes have. Nick can keep that one, I want that.
731, 36. All set, guys? Thank you.